Good evening, everyone. With the posted time having arrived, are we on? We are. With the posted time having arrived in a quorum of members present, I'll call the Public Health and Safety Committee for Monday, June 20th, 2022 to order. The first order of business is the approval of the minutes from our previous meeting, 516 of 22, copies of which are in the packets. Does anyone have any corrections or revisions for the minutes that are needed? If not, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes. Motion by Larson, is there a second? Second by McElhany. Discussion? Seeing none, members in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None are opposed, the minutes are approved. Item number two is to consider approval or denial of various license applications. We have a couple that are recommended for denial this evening by our ordinance. Those individuals have a right to address the committee if they choose. So the first one recommended for denial is for operator license for Christina Nutter. Is Christina Nutter in the audience with us? Christina, okay, if you'd like to come up to the mic, state your name and address for the record and talk to us about whether anything on your record is factually inaccurate or what's going on there.
My full name is Christina Ann Nutter. Address is 416 Elm Street, Wausau, Wisconsin, 54401. It's accurate, but at the same time, it was 20 some years ago. I have gone through everything that was needed and was considered a non-threat. I also, with probation and parole, I have been what they call a success story through everything. This happened in 2001, and currently, 20 some years ago, I am a different person than what I was back then. I mean, I have gotten other bartenders' licenses in different counties without an issue, and I'm just trying to figure out why. Because it's one of those things that, I'm a single mom. So this is the other job that helps support, pay the bills. And I don't know if it's because of the place that I applied through or...
No, not necessarily. The criteria is the same for all establishments. So the license, obviously, is a city license, and Wausau holds its operators to a little higher standard in terms of what we expect. But that said, we also have a consistent application of that criteria, so I can't vouch for other communities, but there's a set criteria that your record is reviewed against, and then that denial recommendation is made by the police department. So, you know, that's certainly not, not a political process, and, you know, obviously the criteria was met for denial in this case. Chief, did you want to comment on this one about the denial or about your recommendation at all?
Yes, I can.
Sure.
So the reason listed on the denial was a result of a second-degree sexual assault of a child conviction dating back to 99 or 2000. You know, that is a serious offense, and it is one of the exempt offenses listed in our policy, and so that was the reason listed for the denial. I would also say that in addition to that conviction, there was a conviction of forgery in 2000, of third offense OWI in 2017, second offense OWI in 2016. Typically, I would make a no, not approval recommendation for somebody who has two OWI convictions in the last five years or three within the last 10. I don't have in front of me when the first offense OWI is, so I don't know for sure that that would fit, but there were additional convictions that might also lead to a recommendation for denial, so.
So it was more the totality of the record versus the one event?
Right. I mean, I have, I have recommended approval for individuals with felony convictions, you know, if they were a long time ago. This one, I thought, was of significance that would be relevant to the policy body to make the decision in regards to the second-degree sexual assault of a child. So that, that was the purpose for the denial.
Sure. Thank you. You know, and I guess, you know, with that, obviously not having the server license doesn't mean that you can't work in an establishment, it just means you can't be in charge of one alone. Obviously, you can work there with the, under the supervision of another licensed operator, so, you know, it isn't like, it's not possible. But, you know, I think that the, the committee will have to make a decision as to whether or not it wishes to follow the chief's recommendation. Committee members, do you have any questions for Ms. Nutter at all? If not, we can then take up the other one that's recommended for denial, and then we can decide if we wish to separate any from the batch. Looks like no one has questions, so thank you.
Okay.
All right. And the other recommendation for denial is public transport driver Jeremiah Jefferson. Is Jeremiah Jefferson with us this evening? Let the record show that Jeremiah Jefferson has not attended to address the committee. So with that, absent a motion, and also in with this batch this month, you have some events, summer events, you have the 150th Anniversary Parade, Labor Day Parade, Iron Bowl's Red Granite Grinder Bike Race, the Burn Boot Camp Pop-Up Workout, the 2022 Exhibit Tour, and the Mon Wausau Festival. So I don't believe any of those are necess, other than the 150th Parade, none of that stuff really is new. And we've got a new Class A, it looks like maybe a new owner for the gas station on Merrill Avenue, but those all would be accepted or denied with one vote here. So absent a motion to consider either of the denials separately...
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I would like to make the motion that we separate the Christina Nutter and Jeremiah Jefferson. We'd separate those and vote on those individually.
Vote on them both separately?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we can certainly do that. So we have, let's see then. So then, do we have a motion to accept or deny licenses as recommended by staff with the exception of Christina Nutter and Jeremiah Jefferson that we will handle as two separate votes?
Yes.
Do we have a motion on the rest of them?
Yes.
Okay. So we have a motion by Larson and a second by Hanky for the rest of them. Okay, so that said, then, members in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None are opposed. So the, the core batch of licenses is, is complete. So then now, we will consider Christina Nutter as the first one, and so then, all of our motions are in the affirmative. So do we have a motion to approve a license for Christina Nutter? Motion by Denny, second by Larson, and so discussion on that item. Go ahead, Lou.
I, certainly, Lord, Lord knows, I've done enough bad in my lifetime too, and I'm not the same person I was 20 years ago either, so I'm all for giving people a second chance, and, and that's why I'm, I'm recommending that we give Christina Nutter her license. Thank you.
Okay. Additional discussion? And, you know, on this particular one, I think, just given the fact that the violation that, you know, the, the more serious violation, we had quite a bit of time, but the fact that we had still on that application or on that record, more than one conviction for OWI, which to me speaks to, you know, we expect our servers, our licensed servers that are in control of premises to display positive behaviors around alcohol. And, you know, making that decision to drive in excess of the acceptable legal limit of blood alcohol content, it's hard to convince me that that level of responsibility is there, but I'm just one committee member, so we'll take a vote then on Christina Nutter. And we had a motion and a second to consider her separately. So with that, members in favor of approving the license for Christina Nutter signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, so we've got three. Members opposed, I'm going to vote no. Alder McElhany votes no. So that item will pass three to two, and that will proceed to the common council on July 12th. So got that out of the way, and now we have Jeremiah Jefferson. Jeremiah Jefferson did not appear to discuss the record with us. That record actually is more extensive than what we've seen in the other one. So is there a motion to consider Jeremiah Jefferson for a license? And so you can make the motion without voting for it.
Let's consider it so we can affirmatively push it down.
Okay. So is that a motion to...
Yes.
Motion to accept? Okay, so we have a motion from Denny. Is there a second? Second from Hanky, just to get it on the floor?
Just to get it on the floor, yeah.
Yep, okay. And so then with that, you know, obviously the record here is a little more glaring, and so anybody have questions for the chief about the denial on this one? You know, I think it also says something that, you know, he's not here. So it didn't, didn't appear to even try to counter any of this. So if that's the case, then, members in favor of granting a license to Jeremiah Jefferson signify by saying aye. Members opposed, vote no?
No.
No.
And so let the record show that has failed zero to five. So that takes care of that one. And so that then takes care of all of the licenses, so we have that item complete. And then we have item number three, which is consider request for waiver of Chapter 9.04.025, consumption or possession of intoxicants on streets for the Wausau River District for exhibit tour for August 13th, 2022. And you'll recall, a number of years ago, the state did change the law to allow for wine walks of this nature. Prior to that, the waiver that we had given to allow exhibit tour to operate with open glasses in the right-of-way was, we found through a legal review, was not legal, but the enabling legislation has passed that makes it okay for us to do a waiver like this for an event with a, you know, defined start and end. And the couple times that they've had exhibit tour since it's been legal to bring back and do, they've conducted it very well, and to my knowledge, they've not had any trouble with it. So River District manages that event now, and so they're applying for that same waiver, and that would apply only during the hours of their event. I don't know if anybody has questions on exhibit tour at all. It's kind of gotten to be a fan favorite in the area now that, now that things are, events are getting back on track. Does anyone want to make a motion to approve the waiver for exhibit tour?
Motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Larson, is there a second? Second by Denny. Further discussion? Members in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None are opposed, and that waiver then is granted. Item number four is to consider central business district obstruction permit for Oz Nightclub at 320 Washington Street. And you'll recall, we held this one up a couple meetings ago because we wanted more information. They were asking for some tables on Washington Street, but no alcohol service or outdoor area for the service of beverage, and we were a little confused as to what the intent was with these tables. Like, I guess, what was the intention? First, we were worried about people carrying drinks out there, because there is some confusion with where people can go at night with their drinks and not. And then, you know, we were a little bit worried about the potential for, you know, littering and things associated with, you know, perhaps outdoor smoking behavior. So we were wanting to hear from the owner and talk to them a little bit to find out really where they were headed with this, because we don't have another bar that has asked for a sidewalk permit. So now, my understanding was that Mr. Jones from Oz was to join us on WebEx. Is he avail, is he on WebEx right now?
He is not on.
He is not on?
I tried calling him, and I just checked my phone if there are any voicemails, and I do not have.
Do not have any? Okay.
Yeah, he's quarantined.
Okay. So, so, so good not to be here, but hopefully could be on WebEx.
Yeah.
So my feeling on this is that we, I feel like we've waited long enough. This is the third time that we've had this on our agenda, and we've not seen anyone from there, and they've operated for an awful lot of years over there without these tables. So, and no other bar has tables on the sidewalk. So, you know, my thought is that we have a couple courses of action. We could take a vote and deny it, or we could just table it indefinitely. And if an application comes in or they show up, I mean, we could certainly consider it again. I guess it's up to you guys. Lou?
Madam Chair, this, I would just, rather just not do it, because if they had any interest, this is, you know, three strikes, you're out.
Correct.
You know, and as you said, this is the third time here, and, and if they were really interested in, in wanting to do this, they'd have been here a long time ago, so...
Right. Or at least send somebody, so...
Yes.
Okay. So then, if you want to take definitive action, we would take a motion to approve them with a second, and then if you didn't want that to be granted, you would then all vote no. So if we want to take that action, which then closes the door on it, is there a motion to approve the tables and chairs, a sidewalk obstruction, rather, for Oz Nightclub? Motion by Hanky, is there a second? Second by McElhany. Further discussion? So members in favor of allowing the sidewalk obstruction tables signify by saying aye.
Can, can I just make a comment?
Certainly, go ahead.
I was, I was intending to favor this, because I feel anybody who owns a business could follow what just about every other business is doing there already, but does this, if we deny, will he still have a chance then to re-submit?
Yes, but the other ones that have it have a special type of sidewalk cafe permit, which is available only to restaurants. So even though it looks like everybody down there has tables and chairs, they have them under different auspices, so they, there are no other bars that have tables sitting outside. He could be the only one.
True, but I can sit and drink at the Malarkey's and not eat food. Just a point. Okay.
Right.
I'm good with voting for it against it.
So, yes, and, and they can, they can request an outdoor extension of their premises, just like Glass Hat has done and 101 Pub has done. If they want outdoor areas, we certainly consider that, but in this case, they want it in the right-of-way on our sidewalk, and no one else has that. So we'd be creating a precedent, and they've really not come to give us the information that we've asked for. So that's telling, I feel like. Okay, so we started with a favorable vote before we had comments. So members in favor of granting the permit signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Record one for aye. Members opposed, vote no?
No.
No? Okay, so that item then will fail four to one. Or one to four, sorry. Okay, so then, item number five on our agenda is discussion of possible action regarding a formal expression of concern for Nuchus Ittery LLC at 1810 Merrill Avenue. We had this on our agenda last month, but it took us a bit to coordinate with Nuchy to get him in here. He's here today to talk with us about this. We know that this will be the second time that we've conferred as a committee with Nuch over things that have happened at the establishment since it was opened, most recently, a, a serious event that took place there that resulted in some bodily harm. So, Nuchy, would you like to come up to the microphone and, and talk with us about this? I mean, you can both come up if you want, and, you know, you're at 100 points, and we are very concerned about that. So, you know, we need to know, you know, as the managers of the establishment, what plan you have to improve things there.
So, I did not know, because we were really busy ourselves, and we're out during the days when the mailman came. We didn't even know that we have, we have the stuff from the, the city halls and stuff. We don't even know, because no one's home. So my, my parents are back, back and forth from Florida, because they have a business down there too, so we're back and forth in Florida. So we don't even know what was coming in the mail or not, until one night, one of the officers came to the house and rang the bell and gave it to my mom, and they wouldn't even give it to anyone else besides my mom. So if my brothers, they were home, they were, no one got the mail. It was beside my mom's home, and she's been back and forth and gone.
Okay.
So we don't know anything.
Well, I'm, I'm less concerned, we're less concerned that you missed last month, and we're more concerned about what happened at the Ittery, so...
Oh, if you don't even receive any later, that's, that's why I'm sorry about that.
But, but during the, during the event happened, we weren't, the whole situation of the fight, I, we were at a wedding. We weren't even at the bar. I was not even part of that. We were not even there all day that, during that business hour. We weren't there. We were at the wedding, my cousin's wedding.
Well, and let me first, I guess, just so that we are fair about due process, I think it's important that you know that we are willing to talk about the circumstances of the event and the record at the establishment. We can talk about that either specifically or in general terms, but you should know that obviously this meeting is recorded both on video and through legal minutes, and all of that can be compiled as evidence if there's ever a suspension or revocation hearing on your license. So just keep, bear in mind that...
Correct.
You know, this, this meeting could yield evidence, so...
Correct.
So go ahead. If you're willing to discuss those things with us, we will.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, yeah, but I'm just saying that during this whole incident, you know, like, we came, that's, that's the whole incident. So what I'm just saying is that we don't know what's going on during the fight. I only left with my family, like I said, to, we left with my family, that whole incident, that's it. So I don't, like, that whole, this whole fight, I don't get, you know, like, I want to know what's, like, how, how am I, like, you know, you know, the whole...
As the owner of the establishment and the holder of the license, you are responsible for the things that take place there and the control of the premises. So if you're not there yourself, you have to have responsible people in control of the establishment to keep things like this from happening. But ultimately, when you accept that license, that Class B license, that's a privilege and not a property right, and you know that we expect that business to be run safely and that people are able to go there and have a good time and, you know, basically leave unscathed, and that when things like this happen, you know, we expect that, you know, I, when we read the narrative of what took place there, that reads like a failure of management, regardless of whether one of your employees was in charge or whether you were in charge. You know, the fact that it at least appeared to the officers responding, that the serving that was even happening there, separate from the fight, was improper, that bottles with pour spouts on them were found outside the bar in other areas of the establishment. So, you know, if people are carrying things away from the bar and serving themselves or being served elsewhere in the establishment, that's alarming to us.
Yes, correct. That's why, say, it's my manager, she recently just got promoted as a manager, two, three weeks ago. Our manager before that quit, so we just promoted her as a manager, and so it's all the new process for her that I don't even know, I didn't even know what that was going on when I was not even there. So that's what, that's what I'm saying. Like, I didn't even know until the whole incident happened. I had to come back and say, no, no bottles were coming, and they're having their license. I say that, they're supposed to know that they're licensed, they're not allowed to have people be pouring. Should be yourself as a bartender, you're, you're licensed bartender to be bartending. That's why we sat down, come back, and had to talk with all my staff and my management about that night, because we, I did not know anything about them having a keg or bottles outside.
Okay, so not, not even to get too mired in the minutia of that night, we need to talk about, you know, the, the management of the establishment. And so, you know, the first time that we met with you to talk about this kind of stuff, there also had been an event where the place was full way beyond capacity, and people were actually hurt and sick when that took place. So, you know, at that point, we had asked you if you wanted to be an Ittery or a nightclub. And, you know, at that point, you guys were committed to turning things around, and it seemed for quite some time that you had, until this happened, and, you know, this, and I, I think if memory serves in the narrative of what took place there, were you not at the establishment at some point that evening, and you had left to take a relative to a safe place? There was some perceived threat to that person?
No, no.
And did not return?
No. I was with my mom, my dad, and my sisters, and my grandpa and grandma. We were all together. We came back from the wedding together to eat there after the wedding. That night was not no nightclub, no nothing. It was a birthday party, they were doing a birthday party. So we allowed, though, I used to allow, they asked me, my manager, yes, music, okay, but nothing too wild, too crazy, you guys get control. That's what they did. I allowed the music. We were not no nightclub, no nothing. We just, we have not even touched that area for so long. All we did is just focus on food in a bar at night, and that's it. We don't even do anything else. We don't have any music going on. We don't even do anything. We haven't done anything until that one night, when they asked for a birthday, and they came in, and we just allowed them to have music.
Okay, so when I read the narrative of what took place there, and it's at about the halfway point, it says, "One male appeared to have minor injuries. The owner had also been punched. The video also appeared to show one male holding a gun just outside the entry." From what I could find, a Class B beer license allows for the dispensing of beer in any quantity. And then it goes on to talk about the license. So, so this says you were there, and that you were basically punched out by somebody that was involved in this business.
No, 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 no. I, no one was involved. The fight beyond the different group, I was just trying, I was right, going, I was going to the bathroom, I actually caught it right in between the fight, we were, we broke out right away. So my reaction was like what Lieutenant told me, don't be always a hero, don't, don't get involved. You don't, don't always try to get involved, just, and I stepped in, that's why I got punched. That's it. Trying to break the fight. It was not part of anybody of, of anything. I went home with my mom, my dad, grandma, grandpa, and sister.
Okay.
And if it happened...
But, who was, okay, so this whole evening, and, and recently, I guess in recent weeks, is what you're telling us, that you've been focused on the restaurant portion of this. So what happens at night with the service of, you know, the things that are taking place in the bar, are, are you telling us that you are either not there or not managing it? That you've promoted someone else to do the managing of that?
Yes, we do have a manager who runs it, and they take care of that.
And that manager is new and was not necessarily trained properly?
Correct. And she's still learning and progressing as she's going.
Is she licensed?
Yeah, she is.
Okay, but as the owner, you still have to have control over what happens there, and, you know, just because you have someone that holds a server license that you've deemed to be managing the place, these kind of outcomes can't keep happening. I mean, if, if you had, did you rent the place out for this birthday party?
No.
Okay, so...
They came in for dinner, and they have dinner, and they ate, and they have music going on, that's it.
And so then, when it got out of hand, why did nobody call the police?
I wasn't, they called the police, so someone called the police? I don't know. I did not call the police.
So a bartender finally called the police, it looks like, at 10:00 to 2:00 in the morning? So...
Now the fights broke out, I don't even know what, how old the time is, but I, I know that my staff called the police. I know that, as a fact.
Okay. So this then says that the...
And, and back to the, like, what Lieutenant wrote, it, there's some stuff in here that's saying that the owner will return about 6:00 AM.
Mm-hmm.
I was, I didn't even say that. I don't know who said that or what said that. I never came on me. He said he called me, I didn't, to answer my phone. I didn't even have my phone on me during that time, because we're at the wedding, we came back from the wedding, my, my blazer jacket was at the restaurant.
But you need to understand that the buck stops with you. You own it. You hold a license for it. And so when this kind of stuff takes a hard left turn, and it's way out of hand, and people are getting hurt in your place, and to the extent that weapons are brandished, there's a reason that this violation was worth 100 points.
Correct.
Somebody, somebody could have been shot in your place that night.
Correct, and you know how much I feel that I even worry about my safety for my staff, my clients, and myself too. We feel that safety. You know, so now, I, sometimes I leave, my mom and we, when we leave at night, we're scared to leave. Like, we were, when we, especially carrying monies with us, deposit money with us, we're scared to leave our front door sometimes, like, our doors, we're locking up at night. We are, we're scared to leave, but we don't even know what's going on.
So are you, are you worried about the patrons that are coming to your place?
Correct, we do.
Because we, we've had other bars where this has taken place, and where there's certain clientele that will come to a bar, and if they know that they can intimidate the owner, pretty soon they basically run the place, and you are along for the ride. And the concern that we have when that happens is the behaviors get more and more violent and more and more out of control. And so, you know, if, there's some things that you need to have a zero tolerance policy for, and not, and certainly don't be afraid to call the police. I mean, when these people that you're afraid of show up, turn them around at the door and send them on their way.
They're, they're not walking back, they're bad for life, they're not walking back.
So if you, do you have a list of banned patrons?
Yes, there's pictures, all the pictures of, during the camera caught them, are lists, are hanging up tape in the back of our room, and they're banned.
Do you have security at the door?
No, we don't.
To watch for these people?
No, we don't.
Okay. So I guess, I, that's just my concern, is that sometimes, and we've been through this a lot, I mean, we've, this committee has been through it with four or five establishments, and, you know, we've had people in for expressions of concern where they have been able to turn things around, things have improved, and it's not been a problem. And, and I believe that you can do that. I believe any tavern owner with quality management can do that. But you have to take ownership of what happened and commit to doing things differently.
Correct.
And not just let it, like, run itself.
That's why, that's why now, it's even with all that birthday people asking for birthday music on, we don't allow any of that stuff no more. music on, we don't allow any of that stuff no more. We, even though like, we, we, like, the last year when I told Chief that we're not, we're not a nightclub wedding, we stopped that stuff. We don't do that. You know, now we're thinking as opening, oh, as a, you know, birthday dinner having, allowing the music, now that's like, it has changed my perspective and no, that can't happen too because no matter what, it's, something's going to happen, there's a cause in between. And, and the people. So we, we're done with that. And we don't even, we don't even open up anything much.
Sometimes, sometimes, certain things, just it starts to get out of control. It creates a vibe in the place and then, you know, behaviors get out of hand and, and sometimes things that you wouldn't expect out of people when you, you know, start to add alcohol to it, emotions can escalate and situations can get out of control quickly. And sometimes it just takes someone to look at another person wrong and it's on. And so, you know, we certainly don't want you or your staff to be afraid to call the police. Not calling them is actually worse.
Yeah.
You know, and, and recognize when stuff is starting to get heated before it's red hot. And so, you know, I, I think the police department has always wanted to have a positive relationship with you guys and help you guys recognize when enough's enough before it's like, basically bursting out the door. So.
And so during that fight too, it was, I would, no one had any problem or issue, like even all the bartenders, even the people, when I, after the whole situation, I speak to them, there was no tension, no, no anything going on. It just, boom, happened. So it could be something outside of before, that they were inside my bar and that happened? That's the thing that we don't know. That's the thing. And, and it's something that, if we knew, shuffling, we, we call the cops right away. We won't because the thing is that now, like, I always say this, then I pay my bills, this is my livelihood, our, my mom and I's livelihood, because we gotta pay our bills and no one's gonna pay our bill for us.
Well, no, and you started out as a successful restaurant. I mean, there's no question about that. And I think that really was where we had such high expectations for the premises that we wouldn't see these nightclub-esque style behaviors taking place there, to the point where things were getting out of hand. But, you know, I think that, you know, sometimes it, it, the owner needs to be there. And like, take, take, grab the steering wheel of this thing and, and, you know, make sure that people know that you're there and that you're not going to tolerate it because, you know, sometimes if you leave an employee in charge, if the right people come in and they believe that they can manipulate him or her, then you have troubles.
Which, which I believe that's true because when I'm there, things are a lot smoother, things are held, held, held differently. And when I'm not there, it's kind of, you know, especially if you're the owner, if you're the owner, things are different when it's just the employees, so.
I, I don't disagree with that. You know, and the, the demerit cycle runs on a 12-month year. 12 months, it's not a calendar year, it's 12 months from the date that this stuff happened. So you have a long time to sit with 100 points yet. And, you know, we always, we have discussions like this and we give you time to turn things around. But if we see that the pattern is continuing or that it's getting worse, the next stop is suspension. And, you know, we don't want to have to go through that with you or, and we don't want you, we don't want to put you through it. But we have a consistent process that is going to play out if things don't get better. I guess, Chief, do you have anything at all that you want to talk about with this situation?
Well, this isn't a hearing, I guess, so.
No, no, it's not.
So it's not necessarily my role to ask questions here, but I do want to report information from an email that I received the night of this incident from Lieutenant Felder that might contradict what, some of the information that he's providing here to the committee. So I'm just going to read from this email so you have this information. "On March 20th, 2022, at 01:51 hours, officers responded to Nuches in reference to a fight in progress. It was reported that 10 to 15 people had been fighting inside, punches had been thrown and someone outside may have a gun, though this was not substantiated. An officer arrival, numerous vehicles were quickly leaving the bar. Officers spoke to three staff members and a hired DJ from Green Bay who were left at the bar. Officers located some blood and broken beer bottles on the ground near the bar. There was also a beer keg in the dance floor area as well as several liquor bottles with pour spouts on them sitting out on tables by the dance floor area. The dance floor area is a separate room away from the bar. It appeared as though people were self-serving themselves versus being served by bar staff. We learned from staff that Nucci, the owner, had been present at the bar during the fight, was aware of the fight, was aware of police having been called, but left prior to arrival. The three staff members denied having a phone number for Nucci and said they communicated with him via Facebook Messenger. I asked them to message him and ask him to return to the bar, however, they said he didn't respond. They also advised they were unable to access video cameras." So their, the email goes on, but I think that's relevant information.
It is.
Yeah. And like I say, I didn't, the hired DJ, I did not hire the DJ. My mom would know. We don't hire DJs. It was not us. The birthday party asked for music played, so.
Well, I think that's different than you saying that you allowed them to play some music. You hired a DJ from.
I did not, no, we did not, we did not.
Somebody had a DJ from Green Bay in your establishment for the party that was going on there. That's different than what you're describing to the committee and that's the point I'm making.
No, no, but, but the things that we're saying is that we did not hire, we did not hire a DJ or anybody to complain. They asked for music to be played. When we were at the wedding, we came back, you know, the DJ was playing. We had, they have music, they have a DJ playing. That's the, the miscommunication with the party group.
Does, does the, does the establishment, Mary, hold a tavern entertainment permit?
I believe so.
Yes, we do too.
So, you know, so that, I guess, and, and we're, you know, we're looking for things to get better here and, you know, I certainly, I think, I know that the committee is willing to give you that chance. But the tavern entertainment permit also exists separate from your Class B beer and liquor license and those two things can be suspended or revoked separately or together. And, you know, I guess just know that. I mean, if you're going to allow someone to hire a DJ and bring him into your place, you need to know what, what those people's intentions are and what the vibe is going to be for that night.
Correct. That's my mistake, I hold myself accountable for that. Because that, me not asking, clarifying what exactly is being played or what, what they're doing. They said they're having birthday dinner and have a dinner. And that's all new because, you know, and I kind of let my management, that's why I say I hold myself accountable because she's so new, so she kind of make the call, which about her knowing all the problems. So.
She, she needs to be trained on that whole thing and they all do because if they're letting bottles out from behind the bar for self-service and somebody brought a keg out of the back and set it in the middle of the floor, you can't tell me the patrons went in the back and did that by themselves and if they did, things are worse than we think. So, you know, we, we need you to like take control of your place and fix this for us.
Yeah.
So.
Which, which is, I'm, we're holding myself for this for that too. I am.
Okay. Anybody else have any comment or questions or anything?
I'm Chair, I.
Go ahead.
I guess, I'm pretty new at this, but, you know, I had to reclusive myself from another.
You did.
From another case. And the only thing that I can recommend to you is, is if you want to stay in business, get a better, get a better handle of your business. You know, because as, as Alder Aspisen said, you know, we can't allow this stuff to go on. And, and the other per, the other place that I, the other case that I had to reclusive myself from is because I worked for him in, in another business. And, and he got his license revoked for the same way that, that you got your 100 points because he just, he just didn't pay any attention to his business and put too much responsibility on his employees and it just went to hell in the hand baskets. And that's why I'm saying to you, you need to get a better handle on, on your business. You need to nip this in the bud before, we don't want to see you here again. I don't want to, I don't want to see you here where I have to vote to revoke your license. I want to see small businesses stand businesses, but.
That's our goal too, but.
Take, take hold of your business. You know, don't, don't let this stuff happen. Thank you.
All right. Does anybody else have anything? Go ahead, Doug.
Yeah, I'd echo that from Lou. I, I think one of the, one of the problems we've seen with the guys that do have problems is they, you get that reputation and if you, if you don't end that, it, it just perpetuates. It has, it gets momentum and they tell their friends, it's word of mouth, you have to, it has to be well-known that you're, you're taking a stand. And I think that'll, that'll serve you well if you can divorce yourself from that, those groups that would take advantage of it.
And that's why I hate it too, because I myself dislike it a lot too, because that's not what I'm here for and what about, no, I don't want these people, and especially the community, the people, I don't want them to see my business, my business in that, in that kind of way, which is, you know, I say is a learning process for myself, hold myself accountable and growing, learning better and doing.
Well, and it, right. And I think it, and it hurts you as a restaurant if people are afraid to come there because they hear of stuff like this. So if you can clamp down on those behaviors and get that stuff to stop, as a restaurant, if people feel safe coming and going from your place, you'll do better. And so, I mean, we, as a committee, I mean, we have faith in you. Like Lou said, we want small businesses to succeed. We don't want to go through another hearing. And, and, you know, we will if we have to, but we want to give you the chance to get a hold of the steering wheel and, and right the ship, so. Okay. That's, that's really all we have. There's not official action that we take on this, it's just us having a discussion with you. So that you can go out and try to improve things. So, thank you for coming in though. And, and for talking with us tonight.
Thank you and good luck.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. All right. Item number six, and the, the next two are informational presentations. Since a number of us on the committee are new, I'd ask Nate to put together just a couple of brief presentations about a couple of things that we deal with routinely. Wausau's alcohol beverage demerit points system and state chapter 125 in the statute that gives us our authority to manage alcohol licensing. And it's a fascinating chapter. So it, it gives local municipalities all kinds of control over things that they should have control over. And it allows us to carry out due process when things don't go well. And so I asked him to do a little bit about that and then to talk to us just in general about the various types of licenses that we see every month in here and, and why we do that. So I'll turn it over to Nate.
All right. So it looks like I'm going to be talking a while. This is obviously a very, the ordinance isn't as much, but chapter 125 is a very in-depth statute that, it's, it's a doozy. So this is going to be a very brief overview summary of those. This is not going to be really that in-depth because when I was making this, I was like, how, how deep do I go? I mean, I could, I mean, this is, this could be a whole semester-long law class if we really wanted it to be and I did not sign up for that.
Just none of that were good.
Yeah. So this will be very brief. Obviously, if you guys ever have any questions on this, I'm always free to answer them because at the same time, I am also still learning and there's always new case law and stuff changes all the time. So, yeah, so here we go. I'm also trying not to read from the slides because I do not like that, sitting through a presentation where they're just reading the slides because everybody can read. But, so anyway, obviously, as we just now saw, we are here to approve or deny various licenses, which we'll get, and get to of all the different licenses that are regulated by the city clerk's office. And so as, again, as we almost should have done this first, but we were just here with Nuches and they have reached 100 points. And there are various offenses that are listed in our ordinance of how you get to those points with some enhancers. So I listed them here. Again, this is all found in the ordinance. But, so they kind of range from severity of the offense, there's different enhancers, if there's a gun or injury or stuff like that. So you can get to 100 points pretty quickly as we had the one incident tonight. That was a one-night thing and now they're at 100 points. So basically, we look at the 12-month period and if you get to 100 points, then technically, if you get to just a little bit less than 100 points, but if one more violation will get you to pass the 100 points, that's when we bring you in for the formal expression of concern. Obviously here, there was the one-time thing that they got to 100 points, so there wasn't a chance to catch them before the 100 points. But then once you get to 200, that's when, when you could have your license revoked. We try to get them before 100, but then that, that wiggle room of between 100 and 200, that's when there's going to be the issue and that's when we're going to be looking at either suspending or revoking. So like I said, we have the formal expression of concern, they have to appear here. If they did not show up today, then we actually then schedule it for suspension, suspension and revocation hearing. So it's very good that they did show up today, otherwise that's what we would be scheduling then tonight. And we'll talk about, more about that in a little bit on all the procedural issues, not issues, there's procedural things to follow with that. So with the suspension revocation, in our ordinance, we say if you 150 points in 12 months, suspension for three business days, 175 points, 12 months, suspension of seven days, 200 points in 12 months, suspension for a year. There's also some cooling off periods that we also then take a look at if it's revoked, depending on if the license is issued to a licensee, a person or a business. It's six months or 12 months. So 12 months for the person, six months for the premise. So here, I mean, we could have talked with Nuches about the possibility of earning some of those points back. They could have had the, either the tavern owner or the bartender take a responsible beverage course to show that now they're maybe a responsible beverage server. With that, then they can get 25 points earned back. We didn't talk to them about that, hopefully that we don't have to get to that point, but it is in our ordinance that they could look up as well. All right. So the 125, which is the bigger part of this presentation. So obviously, everybody's very well aware of, I guess, the lay terms of what, you know, beer is, wine coolers is, intoxicating liquor, but the statute lays out more specifically how that, I guess, they meet into those different categories. And it really comes down to the way the beverage is made and the type of, or the percentage of alcohol by volume. And that will get important because a wine cooler is technically beer even though it says wine. So stuff like that, you just can't obviously, I guess, go with the lay terms. So obviously, there's different types of operator, or different types of licenses. We have the operator license, the manager license. And we'll get more into it at the next slide, or the next PowerPoint of the different types of licenses and permits that are issued by the city. But for here, the Department of Revenue or the state, they have given, I guess, the power or the authority for the municipalities to issue these licenses. So these are those operators license, the manager license. Whereas wholesalers is what the DOR or the state then, I guess, is in charge of. So on these application forms to apply for a different type of Class B, Class A, Class C, which we'll get into, various information is needed such as name and address of the place, if it's an LLC, if it's an individual, the different fee that, or the fees that will then associate with it, various permits that they're applying for, qualification, premise description, which we'll get into, which is very important. They need to very clearly describe what location they are using to license this, any other conduct or any other business conducted on the premises. And then various other businesses or schools or churches that are in the area, that's also very important information to know before a application is approved. So as I said, the municipality, they, or as the city of Wausau or any city, village, they've been given specific powers from the state to do alcohol licensing as long as we do not enact anything that conflicts with chapter 125. So most of our stuff does mirror 125 pretty well. There are a few things that we go just a little bit more strict, which we are allowed to be more strict on than the, the general state law. We just can't be more general than the state law. So what are licenses required? They're required when, two situations, either there's a direct or indirect charge for alcohol or when alcohol is served in a public place. So what's an indirect charge? Well, that's when, say, you buy a ticket from me and then I give you the ticket and then you go turn that in for a beer. That way you can't like do a workaround to get the beer. Same thing like, oh, I'm going to donate you $10 and, oh, hey, cool, bottle of wine. So same thing, a license would be required in that sort of situation. There are some exceptions and there, these are all very well outlined, so it makes it easy, so, such as bed and breakfast establishments, municipal sales and parks, raffle prizes, auctions. It's, again, it's very specific on the way that it's done. All right. Consumption in a public place, that's pretty obvious. Open house, grand opening, an event at a hell of a location that caters to the general public, stuff like that. Stuff that the, the average person that's on the street could walk in and somehow either acquire a beer or walk away with a beer. That would be considered consumption in a public place. So then again, there's exceptions to this as well. This is, I guess, the list of the rundown that's in the statute. So campuses of private colleges, churches, private business gathering, commercial quadricycle, stuff like that. They are not required to have a license to give this out. But I guess, to put that in perspective though, if they're still selling the beer, then they would have to still get a license then to sell the beer. then they would have to still get a license then to sell the beer. The selling part comes first and then they look at if it's a public consumption or not.
So, the, with the exception, those are, that list of folks is the ones that are not required to carry Class A or Class B licensing, but there are other licenses that apply to them, right? So, like churches and clubs and things, that's what we have picnic licenses for, right?
Yes.
And the quadricycle gets its own as well?
Exactly. So, that's just saying, in general, the consumption in the public place, there's exceptions to that, as long as they don't, they're not required to have a license under the selling of the direct or indirect charge.
Time license.
Yeah. So, yeah, it's an exception, but they might get, I guess, required to have the license under the first part of the statute. So, this is now where it gets a little confusing. So, there's, you have to really pay attention to where the parentheses are. So, we have Class A with the A with the parentheses around it. We have Class B with the parentheses around the B. Otherwise, then their parentheses are under, around the whole Class A, Class B part. And I'll show, there's a little, I guess, trick to keep that, I guess, in mind of, so you have to look at this chart every time. But so, anyway, this is just kind of the breakdown of the types of alcohol licenses that are available, what type of alcohol that they concern, the types of sales, and then usually the type of business that these licenses are issued to. So, Class B, a good way to remember Class B is that it's a bar. So, bars get Class B. Class A goes at the grocery stores. Anything like a temporary picnic license, that's for, as I said, it's temporary. So, it's for like the churches, the chamber of commerces, fairs, stuff like that. Events, yeah. So, and then, so then here's where it's showing then the parentheses around the whole Class A, Class B. And so, again, the B, remember that goes with the bars. Class A goes with the grocery stores or like convenience store liquor stores. So, we have reserve licenses as well and there's a whole quota on how, for one, on how many Class B licenses are available to the municipalities. And then, there's also reserve licenses, which then will, as I will talk about in a little bit, cost $10,000. And there's different rules that relate to those as well. So, we also have provisional licenses. These are for new and upcoming businesses that are still waiting on their actual retail license and expire 60 days after that they are given or when the actual license is issued, depending on which one comes first. So, basically, it's a new business, they want to start serving, but they're still waiting for the regular license to come. This will allow them to, I guess, get their business up and running.
So, that's one that, like if we have recommended a license for approval for a new business and it's waiting to get through council, if they need to start operating before that happens for a few weeks, that's the license that Mary would give them?
Yeah, that's the provisional license. Yeah, that's, it's just so they aren't waiting on, I guess, us to have a meeting, especially in the summer when we only have a council meeting once a month. They'd be waiting a lot longer than if they did it in the winter. So, this is kind of the quotas that I was talking about. There's a very defined formula and that describes how we determine how many licenses we get. We are not, our quota does not become reduced because we don't hand out a certain amount. Because I know right now, I think we have three or four that are available, last I was told, or is it, are we now out?
That Mua for Callan Street Pub just applied for one of the regular ones. Rock's Place, I think now should be, I don't believe he's appealing any further.
Not since I've heard.
So, that licenses, so I think we have two right now.
Okay. So, if we were to not issue those two, it's not like we're going to lose them. We're...
We have, how many total, 70?
68 regular licenses, 11 reserves.
So, 68 based on population. And so, there has been, and other cities have gotten to a point, and we were in danger of being to a point where we were running out, and those quotas have not been revised by the state of Wisconsin for decades. And so, you know, with all of the things that we were looking to develop in terms of new growth, new business, riverfront, we were, and when all those places were up and running and the economy was really booming, pre-pandemic, we were very close to being out of licenses and there's not a thing we can really do about that. So, if you're out, you're out. And so, you have to wait for one to come available.
What do you mean by we have 11 in reserve?
Well, the reserve is the one he was talking about that costs $10,000 and the $10,000 is set by the state.
So, you have 11 in reserve, but like three, three or four of those are in use. So, actually, there's seven available reserve licenses, some like Whitewater Music Hall was a reserve, WOW was a reserve.
Masa was one of them.
Masa's a reserve, Courtyard, I think by Marriott. So, there's four of those, so there's about seven reserves left. So, once those last two available licenses, if they get applied for and people are calling about them, then we get in a situation where if somebody wants a license, say they're sitting wait for a license to become available or they paid the $10,000 upfront.
So, they paid the $10,000 upfront, then that license is yours?
Well, not guaranteed. We still, they still go through the approval process.
Well, correct, yes.
It just costs them $10,000 instead of 600.
At the startup.
Plus the 600, $10,000 plus the 600. And then, if they ever sell that business or they, once a reserve is always a reserve. So, if somebody else wants to come in there and there's no regular license available, they got to pay 10 grand over again.
Gotcha. Thank you.
That's a negative. I mean, if people can avoid the reserve situation, they obviously want to, so...
So, to apply for a license, obviously, there's qualifications and those are also all outlined, you have to be a legal drinking age, arrest or conviction record. I mean, obviously, we very much look at that. It has to be substantially related to the license activity. Depending too on what we're also looking at, the pending criminal charges could or may not be in effect. Most of the time, dealing with alcohol licenses, the pending charge will not come into effect because they have to be involved with a violent crime against a child and the activity also needs to be related to the license activity. So, as I was kind of joking with Livin' today, if we start allowing daycares to serve alcohol, then maybe we can start looking at the pending criminal charges. But other than that, that, the pending charge probably will not be looked at.
Will never apply.
Will never apply.
We're looking at really the conviction record.
Just the conviction.
Because we've had people in before that have wanted to talk to us about their record and things and they have charges that are about to be resolved. Like, I'm about to take care of this. And so, our message to them then is perhaps you should, you know, wait until that adjudicates itself and reapply. Because when the stuff is pending, you know, they, if they, if it does take care of itself, they don't know that yet and we don't either. And so, if their situation improves, we certainly allow them to reapply. But, you know, with all of that stuff still unresolved, it's hard for us to make decisions for them, so...
Yeah. And they have, there's no, I guess, prohibition for them to reapply.
Right.
So...
Other than paying the fee a second time.
Yeah. But there's no like cooling off period or you can only apply once a year. They can apply next week or tomorrow if they really wanted to. So, for the granting then of the license, there is a waiting period. They must apply with 15 days prior to the granting of the license. We have to publish a notice of the applications and the permits. The applications or the licenses run from July 1st to June 30th. Same thing, they can't be within 300 feet of this church, school, hospital. So, there's a lot that goes into alcohol licenses. And that's why, again, when they were here today for their formal expression of concern, the state has given the municipalities this power to do this. And so, we take it very, very seriously because it is a big power to have. We never want the states to take it back. And I'm, I guess, as Lisa kind of said, was saw, we hold, I guess, our bartenders and bars at pretty high standards because of all of this. And so, having all these different requirements for the licensee and the premise, it just goes to show that that's why it's important and we don't really want to put up with bars that are not doing what we think they should be doing.
Well, and the vast majority of them do it right. And I've always said to some of them, when they've come in for their hearings, it's not fair to the ones that are working really hard to run their place properly, to turn a blind eye to the ones that aren't. But one of the things that we did, starting in 2012, I believe, 2010 or 2012, I want to say 2010, we then, that's when we created the Liquor License Review Subcommittee. We didn't always have that committee. And when we came around to the point where we had to revoke the license for I.C. Willie's, I think a lot of you remember that, it was heavily covered in the media, we determined, we started to look at what our licensing process was, how it was done in the first place and asked ourselves some questions about if we could be better. Because it is way cheaper to recognize problems on the front end and not approve that license in the first place than to spend a whole lot of money on legal fees and appeals trying to get that license away from somebody. And, you know, just as an example, and I want to say that by the time all of the appeals for that particular case had been processed, I think that we spent something like $85,000 to get that license back. It might have even been a little more because there was more than one appeal. That appealed all the way to the Wisconsin Supreme Court and we won on that one because we had conducted our hearings properly, our due process was done properly and we really had a well-run process there. But, so recognizing that process, we decided to take stock of how we do things. And we first then went over and we asked the clerk's office, so how do you decide who gets a license? And we came to find out at that time that it was a first-come, first-served system. So, when a license would come available, and of course, they're highly desired because nobody wants to pay the $10,000, they'd have, sometimes have a line out in their office waiting to apply when they'd open in the morning. And whoever could complete the paperwork the fastest and pay the fee got the license or got a recommendations to be approved for the license. And so, you know, recognizing we could do better, we decided that a little vetting on the front end was necessary. And so, we have the subcommittee now and we talk with people about what their management experience is, what their plan of operation is, how do you plan to handle things like, you know, noise and conflict? And, you know, how will you, how will you fit into the neighborhood that you exist in? And I think to get the answers to those questions on the front end and have a proactive discussion with owners, especially new owners, really helps them like come at the management of the business from, with a different mindset. And I think we've done so much better since we've had the subcommittee versus just letting speed carry the day. I mean, you know, whoever could come in and write the paperwork the fastest was good to go. And, you know, in that method, we licensed a couple of really bad operators and it was expensive to get those licenses away from them. And since then, with some vetting on the front end, we've done a lot better, so...
And as I'll talk about, it's much easier to deny the license upfront as, yeah, meaning...
It's expensive.
And there's, there's more discretion, the municipality has more discretion at the front end to say, no, there's less requirements than to say no later or to take it away. So, for the premises, as I talked about earlier, the exact area that the alcohol will be served or consumed is very important. So, that's why we have all these come in when they want to extend to like a parking lot or something. Because then that license actually needs to be updated if it's going to be for more than a temporary event to show exactly where it's going to be consumed. So, then we can withhold license and there's a number of reasons that they can. For example, unpaid taxes, lack of seller's permit, unpaid alcohol beverage bills, sanitation problems if they're a restaurant. Basically, we would hear from the DOR if there are unpaid beverage bills. I think the USDA would be in charge of the sanitation problems, letting us know for that. So, as we talked, or as I talked about, the license can either be given to a premise or a person. So, you can go place to place, so premise to premise or person to person. It just depends on the different situation that's, that comes about. If it's place to place, it had to be approved by first Public Health and Safety and then the council. But the, what's important to note is the reserve one, those are those $10,000 licenses, those cannot be transferred. The person would have to basically reapply, or not reapply, the new place would need to apply for the reserve if there's one available. Hopefully, when they go to, and they're, hopefully for them, if they go to apply, a regular license is available because then they don't have to pay the $10,000 and just be the 600. For a person to person, if the licensee dies, becomes bankrupt, or they have an assignment, they can transfer to a new person, but then the actual license would need to be amended to have the, now that new person's name on it or just to issue a new one. They just don't...
So, a new registered agent, basically?
Can you just transfer a license to Callan Street Pub?
Well, that was a, that, yes and no. That was a reserve, right? And he applied for a normal one?
Yes. And technically, you don't ever really transfer a license. They have to apply for it.
They have to surrender it and then you approve it for somebody else. So, they get, give it...
Yeah.
The only transfer is in a death, and we did have that in one case where the owner died and so the license actually transferred to his wife. That's the only time we actually do a transfer.
And then, but then the license, it was updated then for the wife's name then?
Yes.
Yeah. So, I mean, yes, it's a transfer, but really, at the end of the day, it's almost not even a transfer.
It's like a surrender and a reissue.
Yeah. A new license is issued. The person just doesn't give you their old one and say, here you go, you can now go do what you want, even though my name or the old premise is on it.
And some owners are of the mindset that they believe that that license follows the property and that they can sell it with the bar. And it, how many times we have to say, no, 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 that's not how this works. It's not a property, right? And so, getting them used to and understanding the give-back and reapply type process, just so we can keep a clean line between the owners is important.
To that point, though, if a person is selling an establishment that has an established bar business, how does one transfer without some expectation the license is going to be forthwith?
They are told on the front end that they have to go through our process and we actually have the right at that point to say no. So, if it's a place that's been...
No to the sale?
No to the license. And so, they can buy the building if they want, but they may not be serving alcohol out of it. So, if, say it's been a problem and that guy decides he's going to just sell to someone else, that's the power that we have to, you can stop the problem right there because you just don't approve it for the new owner and...
And that's sort of what we just did with Callan Street Pub, wasn't it?
No. I, they're, no, they're surrendering and then getting a new license.
Yeah, but I mean, the business is being sold and they're surrendering.
You could have, if that had been a habitual problem and you, there was no signal that...
Yeah, but I mean, the building, the building was being sold and the business was being sold and we came in here and just kind of transferred the license or sort of...
Right. The new owner applied, you know, and, and I think some, a lot of people will make their purchase contingent upon their ability to get a license. So, if that falls through then, they can always rescind their offer on the building as well, so...
And we, and we actually have, that Tara had drawn up for us for, because sometimes the owner doesn't want to take the chance of losing his business if the applicant isn't going to get it. So, they'll, they have, we have a thing that they can sign that says that they will surrender their license on the condition that the person they're selling it to is approved. Then, if that doesn't happen, they still have their license.
They still have it, yep. And they can reopen the place if they choose then, so...
So, as I previously said before, so, yeah, granting a license upfront, we have a lot more discretion in what we can deny. I mean, insufficient parking, proximity to other places, schools, churches, stuff like that. If they're going to be too noisy, we can say no from the get-go. So, refusal to renew, it's the same for cause as revoking a license, which I'll talk about in just, I think, the next slide. And there's the same refusal or the same hearing procedure as a revocation or a suspension. So, reasons to revoke or suspend or even, I guess, to renew, it's anything violating in Chapter 125. So, it's a really broad, really broad, I guess, umbrella of things that they could do wrong. And included in that is, part of Chapter 125 is them telling the municipality that you can create an ordinance or ordinances for other things to revoke, non-renew, or suspend somebody's license. So, it's a very, that's an extremely broad umbrella. Keeps or maintains a disorderly riotous indecent or improper house. So, that's, again, the disorderly conduct, the fights, the guns, the shooting, stuff like that would be a reason to revoke or suspend. Giving alcohol to known habitual drunkards, not possessing the qualifications required by Chapter 125. So, that's all the licensee requirements to even apply. So, if they lie in their application or they no longer have certain things, they could be revoked or suspended because of that.
And if they have certain felony convictions, right? They can't legally possess the license? I think we've had license holders before that have had, you know, maybe fourth offense OWI or something happen where they become incapable of possessing the license based on their own history.
Yeah. That would probably be more than with the...
I thought that was the qualification part.
Yeah. We would probably more catch it, though, at the non-renewal than the actual revocation, unless, as I was talking kind of Livin' today, if somebody just, you know, somebody pulls somebody over for their fourth, fifth, sixth OWI and they're like, oh, I know he's a bartender. Because otherwise, we're not running those checks just constantly to catch those types of people. But yes, that would be another reason. Or, or then the, then the different manufacturer or delivering drugs on the premise or allowing somebody to be there to do that.
Of the four or five that we have suspended or revoked, most of them have been under the disorderly riotous or indecent house. And I, we did have one that was selling drugs, but almost all of them have been under that, under that particular cause.
So, and then, the hearing procedure, there's a lot of little nuances depending, or from, all the way from how many days that the notice needs to be given to the licensee before then we can have the actual... before then we can have the actual hearing. If they show up for their pre-hearing, if they don't show up, there are different appeal rights. It's, it's a doozy and we follow a script to help.
Follow a script.
To follow, to help everybody kind of go along, but it's just like a normal trial. Normally, we have somebody here to help the complainant who needs to be a resident of the city. It's normally somebody from the police department. They, we have somebody represent them and then there's another attorney that represents the.
Committee.
The committee. I wanted to say the board. I knew that wasn't the right word. And we have, you know, different witnesses. We have usually video shown. There's different exhibits. There's cross-examination. There's direct examination. Then the defense, which is normally the licensee. Then they have their chance to put on their side of the case. And then we go back into closed session and then issue a findings effect conclusions of law and recommendations then to the council. Sometimes those hearings go fast and other times those hearings take a very, very long time.
Our record long one started at one o'clock in the afternoon and ended at 3:00 a.m. And it happened that it was on June 30th and so obviously all licenses renew on 7/1. And had we not completed the hearing, we would have had to have given the license for another year. So that was, that was probably the longest city meeting in history. So.
So, so yeah. All right. And then these are just the requirements for the operator's license, which is also known as the bartender's license. Then we have the manager's license, who obviously are then the managers of all the employees. They're more dealing with, I guess, the day-to-day running of the business than the actual serving. That's, I guess, the distinction between the two.
Do we issue the manager's?
No, Wassa doesn't have it.
We don't have manager's license?
We don't have manager's license.
Oh, well then forget that. That was just Chapter 125, I guess, in a nutshell. Very brief. Like I said, if you guys have any others more specific questions.
One other important thing to, I, I think that we should just quick touch on is that our servers in Wassa are, we have a impaired server ordinance that has been effective. And we require that anybody that is in control of the premises and holding a server license cannot test above .04 blood alcohol, which then allows them to, you know, maybe consume a drink with a patron or take a sample from a vendor. But it still doesn't get them or allow them to get to the point where they are legally intoxicated themselves and then can't recognize when people need that safe ride home, when they shouldn't be served anymore. Because they have to be, have their faculties about them at a different level than the patrons so that they know when, when enough's enough for people. So Wassa has that ordinance at .04. And we have had a couple of citations under that and we've revoked one bartender for that. So, historically.
All right. So then the second one. The various licenses, they're all found, and all the applications are found on the city clerk's website on the Wassa page. So just to basically run them down, obviously, we just talked about the alcohol retail license. The amusement device distributor, that's for the businesses that have like pool tables, gambling machines, bowling alleys, stuff like that. That's what would fall under there. Chicken keeping, obviously, that's pretty self-explanatory. If you have chickens in the corporate limits of the city of Wassa, you have to have a license to be able to have those chickens. Christmas tree dealer, same thing. If you're going to sell Christmas trees, you need to have a license to do that. You can then specify how many different, I guess, parking lots you're going to take over to sell Christmas trees. Cigarette and tobacco license, same thing with the alcohol. Have to have a license to sell cigarette and tobacco. Dance hall permit, which is, we have a separate one for teen dance hall, but this is just any sort of place where you will have dances. Line dance, swing dance, that kind of thing.
Like wedding venues and stuff too, right? Hotel ballrooms and.
Yeah, places to rent out that there's going to be dancing. Looks like we are very concerned with making sure people, if you're dancing, you have to have a permit for it. So. I don't know. I thought that was weird. But that was that. Dangerous animal. So this is a little different. Obviously, people just don't go out and be like, I have a dangerous animal, so I'm going to get a permit. The dangerous animal is usually because an issue happened with your pet and then the police have labeled your animal as a dangerous animal. And there's a number of different things that the person then needs to do to ensure that that dangerous animal does not create another issue. For example, they have to have a metal fence. They have to have the dog on a certain length leash. They have to have a certain amount of insurance coverage. And then they have to have this permit. So that way, people know that this is now a dangerous animal. As soon as then they do not follow the dangerous animal, I guess, protocols, it becomes a prohibited dangerous animal. And then they can no longer have it within the city limits of Wassa.
That actually happened because we had a lot of situations with unprovoked dog bites and animal attacks. And there wasn't a whole lot that could be, could be done. And so, we created the dangerous animal ordinance so that if the situation was severe enough, the prohibited dangerous is the severe one. If it was severe enough that that animal could be required to be rehomed. And we've had to use that a number of times. We have hearings for that here. You know, they, they can go either way, depending on the circumstances of what happened. But usually in your packet will come photos of the damage and there's some pretty, pretty interesting pictures you get of stuff that has been, people have experienced as a result of animal bites. So.
And then, so direct sellers and transient merchants, those are the people that are like go door-to-door salesmen. You have to have a license to do that. Or the company that has those types of workers, they have to have a license to have the type of business in Wassa. Entertainment facility license, basically what it says, any sort of, any type of entertainment facility. A lot of these kind of go hand in hand, depending on what they then have in it. They would need to have a couple of different licenses on hand. Open burn permit, this is like your big bonfires. You have to have a permit for that. The fire pit residential is the little smaller burn pit. So if you have a little fire in your own backyard, you have to actually have a permit for that. I do probably about three of those trials every year because people don't know that they have a burn permit. And normally how it gets found is because it got out of hand and all of a sudden, these people have an enormous flame or the flame got outside the per, the pit and caused damage. That's usually how those ones get found.
And we have the due process by which those can be revoked if necessary. If people get the permit and they don't hold up their end of the bargain, we had one in my area that we had to revoke where the guy had the fire permit and he met the proper clearances from the lot lines and the neighbors and whatnot, but then would habitually burn things that you shouldn't be burning in a fire pit, like cabinetry and building materials and, you know, all sorts of things. And it was a source of an ongoing neighborhood conflict. And so, we finally, after about two years of trying to educate, ended up having to take it back because it was just, it was too bad over there. But, I mean, most of the time, they don't get to be that bad. But.
And those are good for five years.
Five years. And they're cheap. I mean, what are they, 15, 20 bucks? 30? 35 for five years. So, not bad.
For the fire point of sale, I somehow missed that one and did not look to see what it was. Jeremy, do you, do you know what a fire point, or do you know what a fire point of sale permit is?
Point of sale.
Yeah. Okay. I can look that up and send out an email on what that is because there were some on here that I did not know. Okay. I can look it up and figure it out and let everybody know.
A lot of these are real old, that they've been on the books a really long time. So, like.
The fire safety house, I do know what that is, but I was told I should probably not talk about it because you guys are going to be getting hopefully rid of this thing. It's basically an educational trailer. It looks like a little mini house on wheels where they take to the schools to kind of show what you do in the event of a fire. But I was told that one, you really don't rent it out and two, you're trying to get rid of it.
Okay.
I mean, we used to rent it out here and there. And even in our own schools in the Wassa area, we don't use it anymore because we don't use the fake smoke. There's been allegations of it could be harmful and things like that. So, and, you know, glass windows and stuff like that. Kids getting hurt. We just set against them. We've changed our fire programs over the years. You know, when I started, well, before I started 20 some years ago, we went to that because we were, you know, showing kids how hairspray and wigs start on fire inside of schools. So, I mean, we've come a long way, but we keep learning.
Fireworks display permit, you can't shoot a firework off in Wassa that leaves the ground. So I'm about ready to be dealing with probably all of those in a few months.
Those will be coming, yeah.
Oh, man. I know they've been sending out lots of notices, hey, you can't do that. But yeah, we'll see. So, and I, on the flip side, all the fireworks that are sold within the city of Wassa also cannot leave the grounds. So all those little, I guess, booths, or not booths, the little.
Kiosks.
Shelvings at like Menards or Walmart, those are all just big sparklers that are allowed under the statute. Flea market secondhand dealer, you need to have a permit to have a little flea market. Garbage hauler's license, if you haul garbage, either if you or the company that you own hauls garbage, you need to have a license. Horse drawn carriage, you just can't become Amish and decide to go to work. You have to have a carriage permit to do that. Same thing, hotel motel permit, need to have a license to have a motel or a hotel. Mobile vendor, that's for, so we actually have a mobile vendor and we have a youth mobile vendor. Just if you're selling stuff, you know, outside from a vending machine or something like that, you have to have a vending machine.
Food trucks, that's, that's the one we created to enable food trucks. And food trucks and food trailers. And it was wildly popular. I mean, it was controversial when we started it because there was, you know, when it first started and we had not had any experience with it, there was some conflict and pushback between brick and mortar establishments and mobile food vendors, thinking that one would take business from the other. And what we found is that they all can coexist together and everybody is more successful when people are drawn to the area. But that's fairly new. That came around probably in about 2012, 2010 or 12. So.
News racks permit, so that's just any sort of newspaper stand. You need to have a permit for that. Pawn broker, secondhand dealer, you need to have a permit for that. Pet license, if you own a pet in the city of Wassa, you have to have a license showing that it's vaccinated against rabies and. License? I thought there was one more thing. Maybe that's it. Pet fancier, that's if you have more than one animal. You cannot have more than five animal, or cats and dogs combined altogether. You can have a maximum of four dogs, a maximum of four cats, as long as they're not older than four months. So that's what that means.
That was actually a successful change that we made as well. Wassa used to have an ordinance that said you could not own more than two dogs and three cats or something like that. It was firm. And so, you had some people who, you know, could, were responsible pet owners who could accommodate that third pet, but they weren't able to even adopt one from the shelter if they wanted to. And it just, it worked out really well for people that have responsible pet owners that just want to have that extra dog or have an extra cat. And, you know, then it also allows us to screen that process a little bit. So irresponsible pet owners, you know, that already are presenting problems, aren't acquiring more and more animals to just exacerbate that problem. But that one was very well received.
Public exhibition permit, those are like your circuses, caravans, magic shows, theatrical plays. That's what that means. Sidewalk cafe, I think we all know what that is. To special events, this could be a probably a whole hour-long topic on itself. So, and I pulled off the definitions just so I got it right. So the, a special event is any planned extraordinary occurrence requiring city services and/or public right-of-way or public premises, such as parades, processions, festivals, athletic events. We have divided them into two types of classes, a class one and a class two. A class one is a major event with 500 or more people. Whereas a class two is a event that's open to a public, but it's really only, I guess, targeted toward a certain segment of the population. So they're not really looking for, it's going to be, like, the whole city's invited? I mean, everybody's invited, but it's mainly just targeted towards, you know, a certain subset of people.
And a small crowd size.
Yeah. So.
Class one gets approved here and class two we've delegated to the clerk's office, right? Or class three we've got for you?
We got rid of class three. You used to delegate that to the, but now we don't even do the class three anymore.
So now we just have the one and the two? Okay.
Yeah, I was like, wait, what?
No, we used to have three and they approved one themselves without us. So, the little ones, like weddings.
Yeah. All right. This is the last slide. Tank installation removal, that's for your gas stations, the underground tanks, normally the underground tanks. Tavern entertainment license is kind of what we were talking about with Nutches today. Any sort of bar or restaurant that's going to have entertainment inside, like a live band or a DJ, that's what that license is for. Teen dance hall, we want to know when our teens are dancing, I guess, so we have a permit for that. Transportation business, those are your taxi cabs. So you need your drivers and the business. There's two separate permits for that. And then the U Street vendor permit, that was, I guess, a subset of the mobile vendor permit to take away some of like the, I don't want to say harsheties, but it just makes it easier for a younger entrepreneur to get up and running to get going.
Youth street vendor was actually an enabling permit because street, the street vendor permit, which we didn't realize an unintended consequence of that, was really causing adverse impacts when we had some kids that wanted to just ride around on their bikes and sell ice cream. And, you know, we've all heard in other cities where they've had these, you know, big flaps about lemonade stands and things. And we didn't want to be that city. And so, we wanted an easy, quick way for, you know, kids to just do what they want to do. And so, that's where the youth vendor permit came from. Teen dance hall, I think, came about when we had a club that wanted to have teen night, right? And so, they had to, there's things they have to do, like they can't have, they have to have alcohol locked up and things like when they have kids on site. So, I mean, we don't have any now that I know of that have teen night, but the one that did ended up closing for other things. The teen night was the least of it. So. But, so many, many, many things. That we don't, we don't have to approve them all. Some of them, the clerk approves autonomously. And some of them, the departments also, other departments work on, but the larger stuff we get here.
Yeah, it was just a rundown of everything that is regulated or permitted or licensed by the city.
Does anybody have questions for either Mary or Nate about licenses and permits? Go ahead, Doug.
Does Uber and Uber Eats fall under one of these categories of food or transportation?
Oddly enough, no. We tried. We came to find out that it's illegal for us to license Uber or Lyft, but we can license taxi cabs. So we wanted to include them under our cab driver licenses when that all first started. And we found out that we were not able to, based on the, as a state law, I think, that we can't regulate those services.
So what distinguishes, why does a cab driver then have to pay his permit?
Because there's some vetting and some screening. And so, you look at that person's record and you're not, then, when those cab drivers are allowed to operate here, you have some certainty that people who are, you know, maybe impaired are not necessarily as in charge of their faculties as you would want them to be when they need that safe ride home, aren't getting in the car with a known predator. Uber and Lyft, in my opinion, is like legalized hitchhiking. You don't know who's getting in your car and you don't know who you're getting in the car with. And if people choose to use that, it's a growing thing, fine, do it. But at least with cab drivers, when we license them to operate here, the ones that have these terrible records get denied for a reason. And so, we're not putting people in a situation where the person driving the car will, you take advantage of, of them, you know, financially or in any other way. And so, you know, when people have histories of things like, you know, theft and aggravated battery and all kinds of things, you know, we don't, we don't give them, they're, they're recommended for denial for a reason. So in theory, it should be safer. You're putting them in contact, in, in a car with better, better, better things.
Okay. And then I have one more question that goes, goes back to the letter of concern. So you, you, when they came up to speak, you kind of gave them a quasi Miranda?
Yeah. So in our ordinance, it says that that's part of the due process of it. Because normally, it says that it's not any sort of hearing and to not discuss about the various facts that lead up to that. Mainly the formal expression of concern is to just get a game plan of how they're going to fix the problem going forward. But obviously, most of the time, the facts leading up to it are going to come out. And so, we just want them to know that anything that they say could be used against them as evidence in a subsequent future revocation or suspension hearing.
So when we mail them the letter, do we inform them of that? So when they show, because when it, it seemed like when hypothetically a person shows up, they're not aware of that until they get here. He could essentially done about face and left because he, or.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
They could refuse, and, and we've had it happen before. So when we tell them, you know, we can discuss this in general, but if you wish to discuss with us the specifics of individual incidents, we'll discuss it with you, but you need to know that these things also can then be entered into the record. They have the option to refuse to talk about the details of a specific event. And we've had tavern owners before where we've actually cautioned them to not get down into the weeds. When there's places that have had a real long record of events, we don't want to discuss each individual event. That's what the suspension hearing is for. That's what the suspension hearing is for. But we want to know holistically, like, what are you going to do to, like, get your hand back on the rudder of your boat here?
So it's quasi?
It, they're all quasi.
I mean, I guess just give him the guy benefit of doubt if he wanted to have an attorney, because he wasn't sure once he told them that.
We've had them come with lawyers before, yes. We've had them come with attorneys before to the expression of concern, and almost all of them have attorneys for the hearings. So, and that's their right, that's fine.
Yeah, there's, I guess there's no provision in our ordinance, or even probably even in Noah's statute, that they have to have the notice that it's, could be used against them in the initial letter, as long as they're, I guess, made aware of it prior to them starting to spill the beans, I would say that their due process is met. Because, yeah, I mean, we could have, he could have said, okay, I don't want to talk about it, and then, which would be fine, because really the whole point of the formal expressive concern is to just to get a game plan on going forward on how this is never going to happen again, or how they're going to be good noodles.
Well, and then with that, I mean, like you witnessed tonight, we are willing to work with businesses. We are certainly not anti-business, but we are, in many cases, anti-bad business. And if a place is patently unsafe and things are happening there that are of a serious nature and they just keep happening and things just keep piling up, and, you know, often we'll dispatch the police chief to go out and talk to the owner, like, help us figure this out before we get to that last resort. And, you know, if they're completely uncooperative and unwilling to be different or change or respond to any sort of overture on our part to, like, give them that chance to be better, then we have no choice. And then we use our other tools, which is suspension, revocation and non-renewal. So I think we've done that six times. I wasn't here for Pine Bar, but I've been here for every other one. And almost always, it's noise, weapons or drugs, almost every time, so. I mean, it's just, it varies, but those three things often are the downfall, so. Does anybody else have questions for Mary or for Nate about licenses? Because it's a fascinating subject. I mean, the longer you see the licenses, every month you get this batch of licenses, and it's kind of interesting to read through the different things that, you know, people apply for and what they apply for them for. I mean, you just saw that we had, you know, where the renewals are coming up for every license established, establishment in every bartender in town as a batch. And that's a big list. And so to pour over all of their applications and do all of the review and get them all ready for processing takes a massive amount of Mary's time in the spring. So every year, we thank her for that because it's a lot of work, so. But with July 1 coming on, it's winding down, so, almost over, almost over. So with that, we only have a couple other items. We have item eight on our agenda, which is discussion impossible action, amending ordinance 2.18.050.
So this came about because the judge was out for a medical thing and then the clerk was then out on vacation at the same time. And all of a sudden, we looked at our ordinance saying that, and it was going to be a two-week period that they were both going to be out, that we have to be open not less than three nor more than five days per week. So we called the court administrator for Circuit Court, she kind of oversees all of the courts in the county, about what do we do? And she's like, oh, well, everybody else just kind of has this unwritten agreement that, you know, if you're out, then they would just come, you know, fill in, and then if they're out, then you go fill in for them. We asked a couple of municipalities and they said no. So we're like, okay, now what do we do? So then we called the Supreme Court and they also said the same thing, and so then that didn't help. So we ended up having the part-time clerk that no longer works here came and filled in for three days, just to get us by to open mail, because there are sometimes sensitive things that come in the mail that need to be dealt with, and so that's the main reason for that. So I started looking into other municipalities and what they did for their ordinance, and this is it. The court shall be open as determined by the municipal judge and approved by the common counsel. So as of right now, our court is open Tuesdays and Wednesdays mornings for initial appearances, and then Thursday morning for pre-trials, and then Wednesdays and Thursdays for actual trials. And that's what I guess we would continue doing, that's what works, that's what the city, or what the PD knows to issue on their citations for the initial appearance dates, depending on if it's a juvenile or not. There's also a provision in the old code that there shall be one or more Wednesday evenings each month to have night court. So Ann did this for 12 years, Tard did it for seven, and then I've now done it for three. And in all those years, there has never been one night of night court. Nobody has ever, actually, we didn't even know it existed until I looked, until I looked into it. So that's why we were like, well, let's get rid of it, because it says we shall and we've been in non-compliance for, what, 20-some years? So we've never had anybody ask for it. Everybody's, every defendant that we've had has always...
Come during the day.
Come during the day. If they don't, if they're not able to, we tell them that, well, it's at this time, and they're like, well, that's fine, can you just do it in two weeks? I can make it in two weeks. Yeah, that's fine, we'll...
So you're just flexible on the date, then?
We accommodate them with that.
Okay, so this change then would give you the ability to manage that schedule without the shall be open X number of...
Yeah, because then I don't know how else it would work than even with the judge, because the judge obviously is part-time, he has his own law practice. The court clerk, she's obviously a 40-hour-a-week employee, so then we'd have to close during the day for then her to then court clerk it at night, and then, well, then there's an issue because now we're not open during the day. So to me, it makes more headache than what it's worth. So basically, we would just keep the current schedule of what we have now and just make the language...
And then fix this code language, okay.
Yeah, make the language a little more general.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve that change? Motion by Larson, second by McElany. Questions? Seeing none, members in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None are opposed, that item carries. Item number nine is the operations report from the fire department for May 2022, which is in your packets. Does anybody have questions on that report for Deputy Chief Cop? Anything you want to talk about, Jeremy, on the report notable?
I think that notable things would be EMS week. Obviously, that's a big week as far as getting thank you cards and people showing their appreciation in other businesses in the city, which is appreciated by all of us and all of our medics, as well as starting three new paramedics last month. That was, that's big. We're starting to see some more numbers and some more applications come in, so our recruitment processes seem to be working a little bit better, not like it used to be, but better than it has been. So that's, that's nice, as well as, you know, the airboat rescue up in the town of Maine, snatching two people out of the water, significance. So I guess those are the things I'd bring up as something to note.
Okay, good to know. If there's no questions on the report, we'll place that report on file. And then the other report, number 10, is the tavern activities report for the month of May. That's also in your packets. And notable on the report, at least in the tavern report, is that we've got 50 new points for failure to summon police over at M&R Station, so hopefully that takes care of itself. We've seen that owner a few times here for expressions, so hopefully not the start of a recurring trend. Anything on that report that's in your packets that you have questions for the chief about? Anything in the report, chief, that you want to talk about? Okay. If not, then we'll place the police report on file as well. And obviously, if questions come up or you have things that you want to know about individually, you can certainly call or email the chief, and he's happy to have those conversations with you offline as well. Item number 11 is communications. I have none. Does anyone have any communications? Okay. And so if not, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Motion by Hanky, is there a second? Second by Dini. Members in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? No one's ever opposed? We'll stand adjourned. Thanks, everyone.